We will open this special meeting consisting of a joint council planning board meeting to consider and hopefully act upon the Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan, not as a final enactment, but as to wind its way to the state for their review, then it comes back to us. Right at the very moment, there's not a quorum for the planning board, and it may be in order to go into executive session first, be very brief, as we can be. So, why don't we do that, give you time to assemble a quorum, and we'll be back in seven minutes.
Motion to enter into executive session, not only the negotiations.
Forty-two, forty-six, five.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
We do have a letter from the police chief stating that he would like an enclosed session.
Yes, and that is noted in the minutes.
And he's waived his right to be present at this?
I believe he waived that last week.
Okay, but he hasn't indicated anything to the contrary to you?
No.
Okay.
When he comes in, please tell him we're discussing the situation. We'd take action during the executive, but we'd do it in public, so...
Motion to adjourn to executive session, minutes.
Second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Wyman?
Move to approve the chief's contract with the two changes, one being that the chief would participate in the police pension plan, and the other one being that, as well as following state and local laws, he would follow federal laws.
And the town charter?
And the town charter.
Which is in there.
Thank you.
And authorizing the town administrator to sign the contract as amended.
Yes. I'll add that to my motion, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And I guess maybe the clerk needs to get that into the minutes.
She's in.
Oh, I get you.
Fighting.
I see.
Madam President, for the record, I'd like to congratulate the chief, and I look forward to working with him over the next three years. He's in the back right now.
Shall we swear, man?
Did you get him to sign?
And now we will resume our joint meeting with the planning board. So, planning board members, why don't you come over, and we'll shift to the right, where you can take over the left.
Rosemary, do you want to sit here? I'll turn over.
I'll move right out. I'm out of here. I'm gonna go as far towards the back door as I can get. No, I'm coming.
No, no. Come right over here.
I kinda like it.
You got it? All right. Buzz.
Yeah, we need a roll call on this. I have to.
The attendant? I don't know.
Rose, give all kinds of room.
We'll ask you to call the roll in a minute.
Jumping all around here. Stay there, Brian. Just sit right there, is that okay? I'm moving out of the way, and there's still plenty of room. Come on, Buzz.
Find a seat anywhere.
Buzz, there's plenty of room, run back.
Where's Noel? Get over here.
Here, Noel.
Fair enough. This is wonderful. Come on, sit there. It's fine. Thank you for allowing us to get a quorum. For the record, I'll open our portion of the meeting at 7:27. Board members present, Vance McCollitt, John Reposen, Lou Whaley, Noel Burden, administrative officer, myself, Rosemary Ebel. And the town clerk, who will call the role of the council.
Councilor Iris.
Here.
Councilor Rudolph. Kim. Councilor Durfee.
Here.
Councilor Bowlin.
Here.
Councilor Farrell.
Here.
Councilor Wyman.
Here.
Councilor Lemon.
Here.
We are all here and accounted for. Should, I think perhaps what we should do is, just to sort of outline the procedure that we will follow, the planning board, I think, will just explain in a very summary form the changes that they made in the draft that we worked on at our past public hearing, if they are acceptable to the council, and the council decides to adopt those changes. It's not a final adoption, it is adoption solely for the purpose of delivering this to the state of Rhode Island and its planning council, and for their review. And then it comes back, once they have reviewed it with comments, it comes back to us. We review those comments, and we have an opportunity to make further changes. Yes?
Madam President, I don't like to contradict you, but...
Oh, that's okay. It's fair.
If the council, if the planning board approves it and the council adopts it tonight, it does become binding on the town now.
For the purpose, yes.
So that if you want to make further changes later, as it comes back from the state, you'll have to have a new public hearing and so forth. But it would be binding upon the town, upon your adoption.
I understand, I'm sorry, I do understand. Binding on us.
I know you understand, I just want to make sure everybody does.
Okay. Thank you very much for that correction, amplification. So, who on the planning board would like to just sort of summarize the changes that were made?
Well, I can do it. I'll really just paraphrase the letter that both Rosemary and I sent to the town council. At our prior public hearing on July 31st, several changes were submitted in draft form for the both boards, the board and the council, to consider, and the council referred those items back to the planning board for review and approval. And that consisted of recommended changes to Chapter 4, Natural and Cultural Resources, Chapter 5, Land Use Plan, and Chapter 7, Services and Facilities. In addition, the Recreation Commission requested a change that would allow them to acquire additional land for recreation. So, on August 22nd, the planning board did review those changes. Our planning consultant, Jane Wyman, wrote up a section for the Recreation Commission. That was reviewed and approved by the planning board as well, and then all of that required, and that, by the way, was Chapter 9, Open Space Coastal Resources and Recreation. And those changes then required a change to the implementation table, if you will. So, the planning board on August 22nd approved those and recommended them to the council for adoption, and that's where we're at today. Now, in addition, tonight I received an input from Chief Lloyd from the fire department with his input, which briefly stated, takes issue with some of the words in the proposed section of Chapter 7, in particular, 7.1 Public Safety, which talks to a study to consolidate the three existing fire stations into one. Kind of late in the game to get it. I don't disagree that we need a study. I don't think it's in our recommended update that the outcome of the study must be a consolidation. I think the appropriate response times have to be met, which would obviously govern the consolidation or non-consolidation. And I would like to suggest, at this point, it's pretty late to take this into account, and I would rather see an amendment come later on.
I would concur with that. I don't know how the other members of the board feel, but I think, given the time that it was given to us, that we should study it before we make any recommendations.
Okay, well, it is now in the hands of the council. That's a complete, that's a summary. It was about a, you amended it very, in very few sections, and we got our copies last week, so... Are there any questions from the council before we take a vote on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
On a couple. The first one, on the update dated September 5th, Section 7.6, it talks about the town administrator, and it says, 1, 2, 3, the fourth line down says, "The budget is developed by an elected budget committee and is voted on by the electors at the financial town meeting." I think that's in error. The budget is developed respectively by the town council slash administrator and the school department. It's reviewed by the budget committee, and they make recommendations to the financial town meeting. The budget committee does not put the budget together, they review a submitted budget. So I think that's just a factual thing.
And I gather that we can, this evening, make a couple of changes of that type before it goes to the, wind its way.
The other question I had was a procedural one, following up on our solicitor's comments, that if it's adopted by the council tonight, it becomes binding on the town pending approval by the state. There are several tables and illustrations throughout that are blank. Just from a procedural standpoint, how do we handle those? I think most of the blank spots are illustrative and not necessarily substantive, but I don't have total recall about that.
Anybody love to answer that question?
Yes, Jane. Only blanks for photographs. All the maps that were generated and all the tables are completed.
Fair enough. Thanks, Jane.
Would there be any problem with that, Mr. Teitz, with inserting the photos?
No, I mean, as long as there is a copy, as long as there is a copy available for public examination with the photos as well. I'm assuming these are the same photos that were in the existing comprehensive plan?
No.
And that haven't been changed, or these new photos?
New photos.
And have those been available to people, or not?
Do we need to approve them?
Well, the photos, most of them are labeled, so you know what you're looking at.
They're looking at a blank that says, "The staff at Tiverton Town Hall works hard," you know, what it is.
We have already, Kate, one of the...
I said photos. You gotta...
The photographs are actually used...
The Comprehensive Community Plan aims to conserve natural features while accommodating further growth. An exceptional beautiful picture that represents Tiverton. It's blank. Citizens and volunteer boards work together to plan Tiverton's future.
Yep.
These are the pictures that are missing. I don't think it's, you know...
Crucial.
Yeah.
That's what you're thinking, right?
Well, that's exactly...
Yeah, I can't believe these are...
I'm trying to find something that would be substantial, that the reason you'd have to, you know, "The railway, along the Sakana River, should be utilized as a recreation as well as transportation resource."
We have...
Now, that's a good one, because we took the trestle down.
You're not gonna glue in, like cartoons from the Sunday Funnies or anything, right?
No, we have a whole library of photographs, and I think Kate and I have to go through them some afternoon. But the photographs are really only used for page breaks and section breaks, and so they may or may not be exactly as they are presented.
The Newport and Old Colony Railroad railway has future transportation potential. Again, you know, we took the trestle down, you know, just after the railroad bridge at Riverside Drive. No, it's bigger than any condition, and we put it back. So what part of that Newport-Ol Colony Railroad railway has the future transportation? Although, there is an agreement that we would put it back to its original condition if it was to be used again. Am I correct?
It's original dilapidated.
It's the original, yep, dilapidated condition.
And it was stored somewhere, was it not?
It is stored somewhere, that's correct. Those are the only pictures I did, those are the ones you're flipping through there.
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable that the photographs are not a substantive part of the comprehensive plan, and since there is a description of what it is, I think that's questionable, unless anyone should come forward and challenge it at the public hearing. And I noticed one of them even is going to be the, "Insert the photo from the joint public hearing," so it's, you know, gonna have to come from tonight or whatever, or the last public hearing for that one.
Agreed.
So...
Okay.
And I have some more. This is somewhat procedural, because I'm looking at the draft, it's not dated, but 2006, and as I go through, I see some notes with language that I didn't make up. There were obviously other comments, like, for instance, on page 118 of the graph, the draft, Policy 9, I have written in that Policy 9A, which is what was typed, and then I have written in hand, a paragraph B, encourage merger to obtain scale efficiency. And when I look at this subsequent document dated September 5th, I don't see any reference to that change. Also nearby, on page 119...
Hold on, hold on. You already lost it, you can go back, go back to that one again, Buzz.
I have a 9B printed on mine, Cecil. It reads, if I may, oh, you got it there, Brian? Okay, all set.
Is it the merger of 9B?
Yeah. Okay. Good. An older update, obviously.
What's your, what's your draft date, Cecil?
Correction.
Okay, no, this one's dated July 2006.
Yeah. I'm now looking at the corrections.
Okay. This is good. I'd also like to open this up to the public, to make sure we encompass the comments, so... Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on this matter?
No way.
He's sitting down.
No, it's not, it's not.
Make yourself comfortable, Jerry.
Would you like a coffee or...
Just a very quick one. Mara Apke, Net Road, Tiverton. The draft I have is just dated 2006, updated.
Go inside, but go inside on the top of the page, does it say July 2006? You've got this one here, right?
Where the text is, Lauren.
Go into it, Lauren, look at the top. Go in a few pages, and look up at the top of the page, which it'll give you a date.
Go halfway through, just there you go.
Yeah, she has you.
She's got this one here.
July 06.
July 06.
Okay. On page 150, in the economic development section, Policy 4. Towards the bottom of the page, the policy in bold.
Yep.
Policy 4. Correct. If you read the sentence above it, "Such a fiscal impact analysis should be done for any commercial, industrial, or mixed-use development." And then, "The policy require fiscal impact analysis of commercial and mixed-use developments." I just think it should say, "Commercial, industrial, and mixed-use." It's the policy that... Not that the verbiage isn't necessary, but the policy is...
In the boldface.
Correct.
Okay.
Then, in the amendments that were presented on September 5th...
Yep.
I have a few minor suggestions. Back in, the page numbers that I have aren't numbered, but it's the 7.9 Services and Facilities Policies for the Long-Term Capital Planning. Yep.
Hang on, hold on.
Seven.
Yep.
I went back about seven pages.
Yep.
And the last, the blue change, four and a half million for the cost of the new library.
Yep.
I would suggest putting an "as of" date in there, because it's gonna change. And if it increases from two... I would hate to be looking at this in 2015 and say, "But the comp plan says it's gonna cost four and a half million."
As of...
As of the date of publication, or the date of...
2006.
As of 2006, or something like that.
In print.
Yes.
Right after 4/5.
Yes. Actually, there's another thing here, I think.
Okay.
Okay, then back up a couple more pages, that I count as page 10, under the recreation modification. Will allow the Recreation Committee to purchase space.
Yeah, I, you know, what, that number?
Do you have a paragraph number?
Policy 8, pages 130, it's pages 138 through 140. It starts...
Oh, wait, you're back...
Wait, are you back to the draft, or are you back to the September 5th?
No, I know the amendments. I'm into September amendments.
Policy 8. Policy 8.
Okay.
Policy what?
Go to Chapter 9, Open Space Coastal Resources.
The title of the page is Chapter, yeah, 9, Open Space Coastal Resources.
Your left page is numbered, they're numbered. Yep. There you go.
Okay.
Starts about...
All right, and Policy 9, where it talks about develop additional playing fields by acquiring and/or improving land, the statement above it, "The Recreation Commission estimates that an area equivalent to the town farm recreation area on Main Road is needed." I would like to see a minimum. The Recreation Committee estimates that, at a minimum, an area equivalent to the... I would hate to restrict, again, if we're in 2012 and we're just at the point of being able to purchase new fields, someone could say, "But you only need three acres," when by that time, we need more. So I would just add a qualifier in there.
Would an "as of" date make sense there, too?
Yeah, I wouldn't say "as of," I would say "at a minimum."
A minimum of...
"The Recreation Commission estimates that an area at a minimum..."
A minimum.
"At a minimum, an area equivalent to the town farm recreation on Main Road is needed."
Okay.
Okay. Then, my last comment is a little more complex, because I do have some questions about the fire department changes, which I found on page 4, and the title of the page is Fire Department, it's in the September amendments. Could you just give the paragraph number of... The opening paragraph, it's titled Fire Department, the heading is Fire Department, and the first paragraph says, "As of 2006, the fire department will operate its three fire stations with a staff of thirty-two...
Chapter 7, 1 Public Safety.
Okay, thank you.
Second page.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. When I read this, my interpretation of this was that this was not a recommendation to consolidate the three fire stations into one. It was a directive to consolidate the three fire stations into one, and that may in fact be the best way to go, but personally, I who live more than five miles away from Route 24, and those who live closer to 10 miles away from Route 24, might have a real issue with that, and I would prefer that this wording be softened some, to make it more of a recommendation that should be explored, rather than, "We will do this." And I took the liberty of making some changes that incorporated some of what was recommended here, and I actually left some of what was stricken out. I understand it's a late date, and I apologize for not being able to go to the planning board meeting when this was discussed.
Pass it down.
Do you have?
Do you have another one?
Thank you.
Do you need one?
Yeah, we're kind of running short.
Just one?
Two.
This is Rosemary's, and no, I'm all set up here. Thanks, Lauren.
The first paragraph, I left the same. The second paragraph, I agree with striking out that initial key's recommendation. In the amendments that were put forth on September 5th, that second part of that next sentence, "The station buildings are in need of long-term repair and maintenance, obviously, and many town residents and officials feel a new fire station is needed, preferably as part of a combined police and fire complex." That was stricken out. I think it's good to keep that in, because it makes the case that the public and officials support this idea. So I would keep that in. The amendment also struck out, "An ideal location would allow for the consolidation of two fire stations," and it inserted the language that I feel kind of says that we are gonna consolidate all three into one. So I amended that sentence to say, "An ideal location would allow for the consolidation of two, or perhaps all three, of the town's existing fire stations." And then I crossed out, "The new fire station is needed in a location," and left the, while ensuring that industry-accepted safe response times can be met. And then, the amendment contained kind of a justification for why one building is needed, and to me, for the comp plan, the case is stated above, if you don't strike out that the station buildings are in need of long-term repair and the public supports it, this section is not enough to justify. Now, you need a whole lot more, a whole lot more verbiage to justify why the three have to go, and we need one, or insert, "We need a study to look at these." It seems like it's not enough to make a strong case to get rid of them, and to put enough in to make a strong case, this doesn't seem like the place to do it, so I crossed it out. And modified underneath there, "One option is to consolidate the town's three stations into one central station located near the police station." I understand it's a late date, and I apologize for not being able to go to the planning board meeting when this was discussed.
Pass it down.
Do you have another one?
Thank you.
Do you need one?
Yeah, we're kind of running short.
Just one?
Two.
The first paragraph is in... The first paragraph, I left the same. The second paragraph, I agree with striking out that initial key's recommendation. In the amendments that were put forth on September 5th, that second part of that next sentence, "The station buildings are in need of long-term repair and maintenance, obviously, and many town residents and officials feel a new fire station is needed, preferably as part of a combined police and fire complex." That was stricken out. I think it's good to keep that in, because it makes the case that the public and officials support this idea. So I would keep that in. The amendment also struck out, "An ideal location would allow for the consolidation of two fire stations," and inserted the language that I feel kind of says that we are going to consolidate all three into one. So I amended that sentence to say, "An ideal location would allow for the consolidation of two, or perhaps all three, of the town's existing fire stations." And then I crossed out, "The new fire station is needed in a location," and left the while ensuring that industry-accepted safe response times can be met. And then, the amendment contained kind of a justification for why one building is needed. And to me, for the comp plan, the case is stated above. If you don't strike out that the station buildings are in need of long-term repair and the public supports it, this section is not enough to justify. You need a whole lot more verbiage to justify why the three have to go and we need one. Or insert, "We need a study to look at these." It seems like it's not enough to make a strong case to get rid of them. And to put enough in to make a strong case, this doesn't seem like the place to do it, so I crossed it out. And modified underneath there, "One option is to consolidate the town's three stations into one central station located near the police station." So it still conveys the notion, the idea, that one central fire station is an option that should be explored, but doesn't dictate that this is where we will go, and has enough support to make the case for the comp plan.
Okay. Or does it just soften the language a bit, just saying it's optional?
It is optional, and it should be optional. Certainly, the public hasn't had any time at all to weigh in on the notion, and I know my insurance would go through the roof right now if the nearest fire station was over five miles away. So, that's it.
Okay, Laura, thank you very much.
Thank you.
While we're on that page, Madam President...
Yes.
The first sentence, "As of 2006, the Fire Department will operate its three fire stations with a staff of 32 full-time firefighters, plus the Fire Chief and civilian secretary. The town no longer has the assistance of volunteer firefighters." I think that should be changed, to say, "As of 2006, the Fire Department is operating its three," not "will."
I agree, Mr. Ball.
That locks us into something that we really just need to state what we are doing.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this matter?
Carol Herman, Main Road. First, I'd like to apologize for not offering my suggestions earlier. I know that there's been quite a lot of work and time put into these revisions, and I'm very appreciative of that. The additions that I'd like to suggest now are really quite small ones, but important ones, and they concern two economic development policies which appear on Pages 149 and 150. And I actually have some handouts with the suggested additions inserted in the red, which might make it a little easier to follow. And the additions might have the added benefit of being able to be put on an existing page so that only a single page is replaced.
That's always welcome.
The first addition would come under "New Commercial and Mixed-Use Development" in the second paragraph, and its purpose is just to clarify some of the public sentiment concerning new development that came out during the charret, particularly the sentiment against auto-dependent development. And my suggestion reads, "New retail development should respect the public's desire to retain the town's distinctive rural character through a development pattern which reflects the predominance of natural conditions and characteristics over human intrusions and avoids auto-urban development influences." And then, Policy 2, which comes out of that, would be expanded to read, "Support and promote new retail commercial developments which primarily serve local needs and reflect and/or complement the unique character of Tiverton." And then, the second part of the changes come under "Commercial Design Guidelines." And I've suggested an added phrase at the end of the first paragraph, and its purpose really is to indicate the goal of the new guidelines, or where we'd like to be going with them, because that's not presently articulated in that paragraph. And the final sentence would read with the addition, "The guidelines will address such issues as building, design, and placement, parking, buffers, and landscaping to encourage a distinctive visual appearance and small-scale eclectic ambiance that will promote the long-term viability of the community's commercial districts." And then, a similar addition would be made at the end of Policy 3, also reflecting that...so it would read, "Adopt and apply building and site design standards for new commercial development and redevelopment in Tiverton that encourage a distinctive visual appearance and small-scale eclectic ambiance." So, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
I also apologize for not being able to make the July 31st meeting, and I didn't realize there was a July version, because I have a March version, and that's what I've addressed all my concerns with. I have made copies for everybody, the concerns that I have, but I'm just going to comment here publicly the three major comments that I want to make. I have others in here that are minor. The first one is concerning the Stonebridge Task Force. I'm the chair of what we, I thought, was called the Stonebridge Area Improvement Task Force. In here, it's called the Stonebridge Task Force, and then later on, it's called the Stonebridge Improvement Task Force, and I inherited it as the Stonebridge Area Improvement Task Force, so whatever you decide to call it, just be consistent. That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is the purpose. The purpose in here, I think, is confused. You have it mixed up with the Streetscape Project. Primarily, it's on...well, my Page 7, it was the first paragraph, Page 62, it's the marine-related uses paragraph.
Page 62, Page 62?
Page 62, well, this is the March version, so I don't know whether it's the same in the later version or not.
Get us in the general vicinity.
Okay. And Page 62, in the marine-related uses paragraph, in the changes, it's confusing the Main Road Streetscape Project and what we do as the Stonebridge Task Area Improvement Task Force. I believe the sentence should be reworded to say, "The Main Road Streetscape Project proposed ways to utilize a newly acquired waterfront parcel, as well as returning the area to a village-like atmosphere by quieting traffic, enhancing scenic quality, and making the area more pedestrian-friendly. In 2003, the Stonebridge Area Improvement Task Force," or whatever you decide to call it, "appointed by the Town Council, began to study possible improvements to the Tiverton Basin and Secana River waterfront. It also included evaluating the feasibility of removing the gasoline station alongside the town-owned Grinnell's Beach. These efforts should continue so that Tiverton's historical connections to the waterfront remain strong and accessible to the community." I just kind of took what the Streetscape Project did, which you have in the middle of what we're supposed to do, and put it separate. There's two sep...yeah, well, when I put it above it, because it's two different, unique, And that, I just want to make sure that everyone...because people get confused, they think it's the same thing, but it's not. We are not...we don't have anything to do with the Streetscape. That was originated by the Open Space...
Well, I don't see the reference to the Streetscape Project.
I know, that's my purpose. My purpose is to put the Main Street, Main Road Streetscape Project in.
What she's proposing to do is take the sentence that begins with, "The project proposed ways..." and simply say, "The Streetscape Project proposed ways," and then move that sentence either up or down, so the other sentence that proceeds and follows it currently refers to the Stonebridge Improvement Task Force.
All right.
It sounds like you're just changing the...
I'm distinguishing between the two projects, to make sure that everyone is aware there are two distinct projects, and the Stonebridge Task Force has nothing to do with the Streetscape.
There are two committees to what you're saying. We had this discussion at our meetings, and we were quite confused, because we had so many appointments by the Town Council.
Exactly.
As to what...
That's what I'm saying. The DOT, the Open Space got a DOT grant way back when for $450,000 to do the design of the Streetscape Project. We had Alvery do the plans, he presented them to everybody, and he blessed it, the town went ahead with it, and so he's got the plans. That was...were you still on Open Space by then?
I was really very involved in that.
Yeah.
That was probably two and a half or three years ago.
More than that, I think, because I talked with Brian earlier, and he said it was like way back. It was early, it was before 2001.
No, I'm sorry, I thought your question was Alvery made at presentation.
No, the Streetscape. The Streetscape. The grant, the original grant.
That was five or six years ago.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay. And this is just, I want to make sure that people understand the Main Road Streetscape Project is different, and what that involves, Riverside down to the Stonebridge, and then the Stonebridge Task Force is just looking at that immediate area of the Stonebridge to improve it. Unless you want us to do the other thing, but we're not tasked to do that. Actually, I just want to thank you for putting us in here officially, because that's to see it. But I just want to make sure that that is distinct. They're two separate and distinct projects.
Well, that's for...I could make a quick suggestion on that marine-related uses paragraph. In fact, the point where it says, "The project proposed," if that was brought into a new paragraph, and instead of "the project," "Another project proposed along..." "Another project proposed ways to utilize," would that separate that enough for you?
Well, that's why I put that sentence in front of the Stonebridge, in 2003, the Stonebridge, because it actually pained. And that's why I said, "The Main Road Streetscape Project," to distinguish, to put a name to it, because that's actually what it is on the grant.
Do you have what you did?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be helpful for us to look at that?
Well, I have a lot of other verbiage in there, that's why I haven't handed it to you.
We've got to get to it here.
Yeah.
We've only been doing this for about three, four years.
This is kind of behind the curve.
So that's...that's the first comment I have, the first major comment I have, is just distinguishing those two projects, and to come up with a consistent name for our task force. Like I said, currently, I thought it was Stonebridge Area Improvement Task Force, but if you just want to make it Stonebridge Task Force, that's fine, whatever you decide. The second major comment I have is concerning the town-owned parcels, which is on Page 63, at least it was in the March version. It says in there that the...that there is no...it says on Page 63 that the...currently there is no...
It's good enough.
Let me read it. "There presently exists no comprehensive inventory or evaluation of the town-owned land," and that's not true, because as part of the Open Space, that's what I do. I keep an inventory, a list of the town-owned properties, and I maintain that. I periodically, I go in to the Tax Assessor, get a new printout, and then incorporate it in my database. It has the map and lot identification of each parcel, its address, the acreage, the value, a physical description, because our members have gone and physically looked at the property, and we've had various comments on the property, like, you know, "Watch this," or "This could be a part," or something like that. So that does exist, so that sentence, "There presently exists no comprehensive inventory," is not true.
Where is that database located?
I have it.
So it's on your computer?
Yes.
It's not accessible to the county?
No, I've given it...well, I've given it...
We have copies.
Yeah, they can have a copy.
We also have a copy of all the land that the town of Tiverton owns, because we're required to do it as part of our auditing process, that we have to keep track of all of our assets.
So that needs to be updated in this thing, it's not...
Yeah, my input is from the town. My input is from the Tax Assessor, so I just put it in a different format.
So then, it needs to be corrected here?
I want to make sure, you know, we're jumping between two documents, and I know some of this has been corrected along the way, because this originally...Susan is quoting from the March 2006, so I'm trying to hop into the July to see if it's still accurate to what her...
What page were you on in that?
This is 63.
63, but she's in the...
The town-owned parcels, it's under, I don't know.
63.
It says that there is no...
Okay, all right.
And there is an existing list.
There is an existing list.
I know, but there is, and I was saying, that is an interesting...
But this is the one from July?
Of July 2006, it does in fact say that it is an existing list.
We have to keep the list to be in compliance with...
And I'm telling you, there is.
GASP 34.
Right.
GASP 34.
Okay, okay.
You have to read the entire sentence and see how it fits. "There presently exists no comprehensive inventory evaluation of this important resource for the purpose of long-range planning." So it doesn't say there is no list. It says there is no list for the evaluation and long-range planning, and we do not have one that puts those purposes to that land.
No, that's not true, because that's what we use for Open Space.
You may use it for Open Space, but the sentence is not incorrect when it says, "There is no comprehensive inventory or evaluation of this important resource for the purpose of long-range planning." The planning is not...the planning meaning, I take it meaning, from this body, the governance body, the planning board and the Town Council, and what you would do with that. That's the long-range plan. You can say that the long-range plan is Open Space, but I think that sentence is correct in what it's stating.
Would you be averse to taking the last sentence, which currently reads, "Such an inventory needs to be produced and regularly evaluated," would you be averse to simply changing that to say, "The currently maintained inventory needs to be regularly evaluated with respect to the evolving processes?"
Either way, because certainly, "Such an inventory needs to be produced and regularly evaluated and updated," and it needs to be evaluated. I think the evaluation is what's missing from the process.
Well, we evaluate it, I don't know who...I don't know who you mean by, well, who you think should evaluate it.
All boards and commissions making an evaluation of something should be making that report to the administrator in the council for long-range planning.
And we do. I mean, we go through the list, and then we give it, we present it to, I think, the tax...I think the tax...
Assessor?
No, the treasurer was on one of them, because I know one of the parcels, he was involved in.
As part of GASP 34, which we are just coming into compliance with, and we were required several years back, we now have a comprehensive list of all of our assets, whether it is developed assets or undeveloped assets. That was just completed, so when this document was written, it was correct in its interpretation, but we were in the process of doing that. Now, the issue that I think needs, that exists, is we need to evaluate our assets to see if we should continue to own those assets or to release those assets. And I think if that's the language that you want to put in there, that's the language that needs to be there, because a municipality or any government should review and regularly look at the assets, their properties that they've acquired, and where they are as far as the planning, and whether we need to retain these or sell these properties and put them back on the tax rolls.
That language clearly states that purpose.
And I would say, it does not detract from Policy 7, supports it.
Yeah.
I agree.
We have already done the first, but we have not done the evaluation part of it.
Yeah, and the policy leads to that, and that's why I say that language, I think, is relevant.
I was just confused, I guess.
Okay.
I think...
I think that Mr. Boland may be reading it correctly, but more finely than most people would read that. Because I think on a fast read, the take is there is no list. But as you go forward with your thought process, you're correct. But I don't know how many people would go forward with that precise thought process.
I guess it becomes, it becomes the way I read and take the whole sentence and try to evaluate it from there.
I think we should assume that people can read the whole sentences.
You know, I'm looking at your list of comments. Some of them should be just turned over to Jane with the E on Osborn.
I know, I know. That's why I'm not going through them. I'm only going through three main ones.
All right.
That was one. My third one is on economic development.
Fine.
Okay. And the economic development, the portion that I want to discuss is in the, in the goal and the objectives, I think the term, we use the term in the beginning of the document, special character for the town. In section, in the economic development goals and objectives, you don't, you just say character. I think you should interject special in front of the character to be consistent with what you have put in the front of the document.
You know, we just received comments from Carol Herman with regard to a number of things in that.
Right.
So that some of your comments are duplicative, I believe, of hers. And when we talk about reflect the unique character of Tiverton, the eclectic ambiance of Tiverton.
Right.
I think...
But in the specific goal and objectives per se, not, she was talking like the policies and...
Yes.
Which I, which I agree with, but in the beginning of the section, it has the, the character, it just says character. I think we should put the term special in front of it because that ties in with what you said earlier in the document.
Okay.
Okay. Personally, I would, I would like to inhibit regional chains from being in Tiverton. And I would like to say commercial instead of, to say from commercial, I would like to say non-chain commercial or something like that. In the policy, they have the, in 2A, they, they say that the, they might, the developers might argue that chains serve local needs. And then here you just say the commercial, you know, serves local needs, implying that you just want small businesses, but developer might say, hey, Dunkin' Donuts serves local needs, you know, or Filee serves local needs. But what I want to specifically say is non-chain or non-formular or something like that to imply that these are small, commercial businesses that we want to, to have in town. I want to be more specific is what I want. That's all. The other thing in there in the fiscal impact study in Policy 4, I think you should add the words that it should be an independent analysis and an impartial, independent group should do the analysis. It should be paid by the developer through the town. Okay? The town should, the town should have, should select and pay this impartial, independent group to do the fiscal impact study.
Excuse me, may I ask Noel or Rosemary, isn't that stated in development regs that that would be done? If I remember correctly?
In which regulation?
Well, maybe design standards or...
It states that the, that there should be a fiscal impact study done, but I'm thinking that...
Subdivision regs I'm talking about.
Yeah, that the developers should do it.
Not this document.
No.
It's in here.
It's in the comprehensive permit process.
Okay.
But I, I think it's a mistake trying to get too, too specific in these policies.
If it's elsewhere.
When you get into the subdivision, land development subdivision regulations, the reviews, the costly reviews are borne by the applicant.
That's what I was looking for.
And that follows the general law.
Right.
The specificity is in the checklist.
I want to make sure that we, that the town can select the fiscal impact study group that it's not...
It's already done. It's already done. This is why I brought that up.
Well, the last developer, he had his own thing done and we didn't get to select it. He did it.
We selected...
He did? Okay, I just want to make sure.
We selected the review of that.
Okay, I just want to make sure...
It's just like, we don't select his engineer, but we have our own consultant engineer review what's submitted and the applicant must pay for those reviews.
Well, I know the applicant must pay for it. I just want to make sure that it's an impartial analysis.
There's no such thing. Everybody has his or her own agenda.
I know, but I just don't want it to be, I don't want it to be an agenda from the developer.
Right.
Findings in them. That's all.
Okay.
That was my comment. In the industrial technology park section, I think it should say in there that why you want to have an office technology park in the industrial park, the benefits of it, like, for example, the impact on the environment and town services and traffic is less for an industrial park than, or an office park than that of a large-scale retail. I think you should, should state why you want to have an office park. And that's, that's all my major comments.
Thank you.
Chi Loiano, Main Road, Tiverton. I just picked up a copy of the draft last week on Friday, I guess it was, and I want to make a comment. I am not against the town having a town center or mixed-use development. However, all of you know that I have been against a proposed development by Mr. Hasenjager in town. And I just have some concerns because I know he's in front of the planning board as we speak with some zoning changes that he wishes to present. I think it's on October 8th. And I'm concerned when I read through the comprehensive plan that there's a couple of maps, one on page 117 and there's another one that I just lost, it's on page 59. And the one on page 59 is called Future Land Use Plan and there's a town center area depicted. And it takes into account Mr. Hasenjager's property. On page 117, there's another map depicted and I recall this map was one of the maps used back when we were talking about the iPod. I think it was about a year and a half ago. And I remember that this land, line that goes below, south of Route 24 was expanded to include Mr. Hasenjager's property, although it was not on the original iPod map. So my concern is that by having these two maps depict his land, it's going to almost seem like we are giving approval to his proposal for a town center slash lifestyle center when, in fact, I don't think we've done that yet. And I don't know if we, if the town is going to do it. I don't know if you know if the town's going to do it. I certainly hope not. I think the impact is not appropriate to everything that I've heard here tonight and to the comprehensive plan that people have wanted throughout in Tiverton. So I just don't know if it's appropriate to say this now, but I did want to go on record as saying if, in fact, this is going to be used by Mr. Hasenjager to illustrate, well, it's in, it's in the comprehensive plan, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
So you would prefer the, perhaps that study area just come out?
Come out. I think we should have a town center someday. I think we should have mixed use. I don't know if we should specify that it should be along Route 24. We're in the process of hopefully hiring a town planner. There's a lot of work to be done in town. I don't know if the townspeople want to spend the money on a town center within the next five years, as it says in your timetable in the back. And I just feel as though it's not appropriate as a taxpayer and that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. May not be. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
She was up before already.
I know, I'm going to be really quick because I neglected to thank everyone for the enormous amount of time that went into this. The planning board, I know, has worked for so long and there was an awful lot of public input. It may appear as that this is the only public hearing or only time people have been allowed to give their input on the plan, but there's been a lot of input from the different professionals in town government and a lot of individuals and I just wanted to thank the planning board.
Laura, excuse me, we need to, what do you want to do? Need eject?
They need help with the tape.
Eject?
Eject and flip.
They just flipping over?
Yeah.
Hit record.
Hit record.
Laura, it's okay. They were just...
There you go.
Okay. There you go. We're all set. Did you finish?
Thank you.
Thank you.
She was just saying how great everyone is.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, Sally Black, I'd also like to thank everyone. Mr. Udo and I have been sitting here watching this process until very late in the evenings and we pass things back and forth to all the bodies to look at and correct and check. And I'd just like to thank you all very much.
Now, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Madam President, I'll be very brief. Chief Lloyd, Tiverton Fire Department. First of all, I need to apologize to Mrs. Evers. Chairman, I inadvertently in my cover letter this evening had placed Mr. Berg as chairman. My apologies for that. I apologize for the, I'm sorry. I apologize for the lateness of that as well as that I was waiting for more information to come in. And I will provide to you in one of the reports that I was able to get done, color overlays, which will help differentiate what that is. Again, I just wish to do that.
Thank you. Provided nine copies.
Yeah, as you can see, it was rather massive.
Thank you. Now, with regard to the comments that we have received from a procedural standpoint, do we, here's, here's the problem as I see it. The sooner, as the town solicitor has said, the sooner this goes on record, the sooner we can deal with the developments that are on the, on the board. And any postponement is going to be, in many ways, difficult for the town. So from a procedural standpoint, do we ask the planning board to review these tonight or, or can the town council decide what to include and pass and approve with amendments? Or we need some guidance?
Is there a planning board? When's the next planning board meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday.
But it's not that advertised 48 hours.
Well, it's Monday.
No.
So, my, well, yeah, my suggestion would be, I, I think you should discuss and vote on the stuff that's here before you now as far as the various principles. And I think the idea would be if you could draft it, if you could get a final clean version by Thursday night with the photographs, that way there's no question.
I don't think so. I really don't.
So that's two nights.
It's pushing, there's two days. And some of these, I don't have a problem with, for instance, some of the cementals are very clear and to the point, or others starting out, it's almost a workshop to get through them. And some are wordsmithing. I would rather come back and put in amendments after this gets approved by the state personally. It's my recommendation. Take what we have before us, what the planning board has reviewed and approved, make a note of the comments and those go in when the state comes back to us. And they have to do a 60-day turnaround. I mean, this has been in the middle for what, four years? Over? Or more?
How much is state approved now? I mean, it will go quick with these changes and...
Absolutely. Well, we have one amendment that went through and took about 30 days.
But there are some just incorrect statements that can be corrected easily and I don't see the point of waiting until...
Well, that's to be done by you. People put it in IED? Those generals could be adopted by, without the planning board's approval?
Well, I think you would need to approve it, as I'm saying, I think you need to vote and approve it tonight. And then I was just hoping that there would be at least a clean copy of what, and what I've been thinking of was next Monday's council meeting, that so there'd be a clean copy in front of the council at that point, which would, you know, give us a little bit stronger legal ground to say this is the version we're adopting. And if you're, you know, if you can just take a few minutes to go through that and say, okay, this is, these are the wordsmithing ones we're going to go with now, the others we're going to not go with, that would, I think, be helpful. I really am, you know, I've, I've said this before, I'm not comfortable with any board or council adopting the stuff without the specific language in it. I just don't think that's due notice to people.
Yeah, I'm not recommending.
So if you can, if you can come up with the notice, like you said, you know, okay, we'll take this particular change, the specifics, that I, I think you could vote on and we could get it, get it through and then you decide what you want to postpone until later.
I just don't think it's realistic for us to get through it Thursday night.
Well, that's what I'm saying, no, but so don't. So just pick now the stuff that is the simple changes, to vote on it, let the planning board vote on it now and then just get the final version before the council next, Monday night.
Personally, I have no problem with Laura Epstein's input, you know, Carol Herman's because it's pretty specific. I would recommend that the planning board looks at that, votes on those two. And the other is too much wordsmithing. It's not specific enough. But these that have been presented to us, I think are fine.
I think a couple that Mr. Leonard, he brought to our attention should be corrected as well.
And the one that Mr. Boland had. I have one that in the update, there's a distinction, there's a discrepancy on what the library would cost and we corrected in one and not in the other. That's a simple thing to correct. 1.9.6 and the other is 4.5. But I think the approach of adopting the Laura Epstein, adopting the Carol Herman, that we have language and we can all read it, would be useful. I think any other comments, whether there's an E on Osborn, you know, we can do that too, but I think the planning board has to go first.
It sounds like you were talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, four things here. One is the correction of the amount for the library or the inclusion of $2,006.
Yeah.
The second is the correction of the, and I'm confusing the names myself, the two, the waterfront projects by moving the sentence around.
No.
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 Forget that one. Okay.
That can be corrected. And it may be that the council, by the time this all gets done, the council will be making changes in that area.
Okay. So then we're looking at the library amount, the page labeled Fire Department and the page labeled 10.7 Economic Development Policy.
Yes.
And, do you want motion on that or?
Oh, in it. We also have section 7.6 about... Oh, in it. We also have section 7.6 about town administration. Has to be included in that as well.
Okay.
And the Fire Department...
First sentence.
Yes, is operating.
Yes.
Instead of will operate, is operating.
And you have the page 150 industrial added to the board.
Yep, commercial and industrial.
Policy four, adding industrial.
Are we missing anything else?
I think the point about the maps.
Yeah, do we want to delete the map? It doesn't appear to follow the text anyway.
Yeah. And that's on 117?
I had a comment on that map situation. Mr. Hassanjager, that land was under moratorium for a number of years. He wasn't able to develop it. I think it would be, it would be a mistake to pull that out.
I don't think we should talk about whether any particular developer, Hassanjager or anybody else. I just think the map may not be the place, it's not needed for the text.
Exactly. If you read the text above, in policy eight, it makes no reference pro, con, or otherwise to any locations. So that map is just kind of a, it wasn't previously addressed.
It could be South Tibbeton for, you know...
It separates policy eight from water.
Why did you have that after? That was the actual boundary of the town center study with...
Yeah, that was the moratorium.
And that is discussed in detail with a number of...
And the moratorium. Yeah, but that shows also in the future lands you smacked.
Yeah.
So there's none.
Yeah.
This one on page 16. But taking it out doesn't change the...
No.
No, no, it was the study area.
No.
It doesn't. Just get rid of that illustration on page 117.
Actually, I have a list of everything in order. If we go through them, we'll just check off what we can do.
Good.
Okay, the first one was section 7.6.
Okay, now, what is your base document? Are you on the July 2006?
Yeah.
These are added into the July 2006.
Give it a page.
Yours.
Which one are you on?
Okay.
Now, are you, is, is the action going to be, we'll make a list of this then?
She got it.
And you would make a motion to make the change?
No, we will make the motion.
Make a motion.
No.
We're on...
Seven point six?
7.6, Jane.
Okay, the very first paragraph, under the budget...
Before we start on this, let's just outline the steps.
Okay.
You're going to go through, planning board is going to vote tonight?
Yes.
On these changes.
Okay. Are we then going to get a clean copy for a Monday night meeting? Is that your advice? Or do we then just vote tonight on the plan as amended?
Clean copy.
I think what you can get is another set of updated amendments. You would not get the whole document by Monday night.
Right. That's absolutely right.
But then you would at least have these amendments tonight as part of your amendment pack.
Fine. Now, since this is a planning board thing, I can adjourn this portion of the council meeting?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, after Jane gets through with this stuff, I think what you're going to do is you're going to have a, close the public hearing. So the public hearing, the joint public hearing will be closed by both bodies. Have the planning board vote on the list of Jane's amendments. And then have the council vote to continue the matter on their vote till next Monday night's meeting.
Okay.
So we come up for a vote Monday night with the council with the clean copy in front of you, but the public hearing would already be closed and the planning board, so if you had a prob, so if any of the council members have a problem, speak up now because with the public hearing closed, you won't really be able to speak up about it. Next Monday night, it'll be just yea or nay.
But on Monday, but tonight the planning board must adopt the plan as amended.
The planning board would adopt it tonight, yes.
Because...
As adopted.
Otherwise, you'll have to come back on Monday for another joint meeting.
Right. And that's why we would close the public hearing tonight, have the planning board vote on it tonight. It's just, it's just a formality. If, if the planning board were meeting in a time that it could be done so that the planning board could have a clean copy too, but I think we didn't want to put that extra time there. So it's just a little extra check to have one clean copy before the council finally signs off on it.
Okay, page 112, first paragraph. Budget is developed by, how was that, Mr. Boland?
The budget is developed by the town council slash administrator and the school committee slash superintendent and reviewed by the budget committee. Reviewed by the budget committee, which makes a recommendation to the town financial meeting, or to be precise, the financial town meeting.
Okay. Everyone okay with that one?
Thank you, Russ.
Okay, the next one was economic development policy four.
Page?
All right. That's chapter 10.
10.4, so.
I have to find the page.
What's the number? Government Finance? 143.
140 what?
143.
143.
That's on section...
That's not it.
Okay, policy four, page 150. And the word industrial.
Yeah, on the policy four.
So we keep commercial, comma, industrial, and mixed use developments.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, then under section, we have to sort of jump around a little bit, sorry. Back to services and facilities. Okay. Under the library.
Okay.
7.9.
And what page is that in?
Oh, 14?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
12.
Oh, right, okay. already accepted. Then there would be an additional note that as of the year 2005...
2006.
2006. Okay, so that, that is a change to the amended page.
Jane, I've got a problem with that one though, because on that update that was presented to us on July 31, the library services, 7.3, third paragraph, we're up to 9.6 million.
Okay, now where, where do you have that?
What came to us on the 31st?
Yeah, it does appear twice. It appears in one section, Jane, as 9.6, I think it is. Another section as 4.5.
Okay.
It's just a question of making it consistent.
Yeah, now we have 9.6.
No, I know. I'm saying make it consistent.
The total price of the new library is...
What do we put, 9.6?
That's what came to us on the 31st.
No, I don't know what the number is. Okay, but we're going to put 9.6 and then say million as of 2006.
Right.
Both places. Okay, so if the cost of the library...
7.3 and 7.9 of your update.
Over in the front.
Well, then how much would the town be responsible of that total cost?
It says the state of Rhode Island would reimburse the town for nearly half the cost.
Okay, so we change in the two sections where discussed the cost of the new library to 9.6 million.
In 2006.
Okay, then under the, back to the amendments, under Article 9, the new language that's proposed to be inserted regarding the need for recreational fields, we could add the word as a minimum, three acres is needed.
Yeah, what page?
It's, it's on the update, under open space. Section 9.0. Right.
So it would need the recreation commission estimate that add a minimum on an area that's equivalent to the town farm recreation area on Main Road. Playing is in progress. It's needed to develop additional playing fields.
There is, there is more than...
Between the words that and an area was adding minimum.
Could, Madam President, Madam Chair, I believe there is more than three acres down there for the town farm. I think that was a number that, that they weren't exactly sure. I don't know if you want to put acreage in there. They typically have said they need at least three acres to develop some ball fields. And then they, then they came back and said the town farm recreation area, an area that size would be sufficient, which is more than three acres. I can tell you that.
And we should just list it as an area equal in size to the town farm.
No smaller than the town farm.
Right.
Recreation area.
I think Mr. Steckman is correct because that night, Mr. Cook, I think, said three acres, sorry, three acres.
That's where it came from. Probably an area equal to or more, no, no less, no less than the town farm recreation area.
As a minimum.
As a minimum.
Okay, and delete reference acreage.
Yep.
How about, how about with this update, how about accepting Laura Epstein's input?
I didn't see that.
In total.
Need to talk about this. This is the input from the fire department?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I guess that's up to you. That's very easy to do.
Yeah, that's pretty broad. Keeps the elements out.
There was a typo change on that.
Per sentence.
Per sentence.
Right.
Fire department is operating, Jane.
Right, we got that.
Okay, just want to make sure.
That's not a change in policy now.
And then, do you have a Carol Herman?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay.
There's extra copies of that?
Madam President and Madam Chair, is the only change that you're making in the fire department is where it is operating in three stations with the amendment that was originally presented to you in September? Or where are we going with the fire stations?
I was suggesting we accept Laura Epstein's input.
I would, I would take, I would, I think the comments were as outlined that, I know I spoke and worked with Jane, if there, this does speak to the issue, a new fire station is needed in a location to allow for the consolidation of three existing stations into a central station while ensuring that public, that industry accepted response times can be met. The ideal would be to have one station. However, we could not meet the industrial standards, and we would have to go back to a minimum of two stations. It also clearly dictates in there, in this original copy from 9.5, what the problem are is with these structures. It is not a matter of simply renovating these structures. These structures are antiques, and it has to be looked at that. So the challenge is either build, let me finish, build one station, or to build two new, smaller stations that meet the modern needs of firefighting equipment. To state that we're going to, none of our existing buildings meet the current needs for the way you bring equipment into stations anymore and anything like that. The goal was, as when it was talked about by the council, for one station. If two is the minimum that is needed to provide fire safety, I fully support that. But right now, we are not even sure as an organization how many stations that we need, and it's not the fault of anybody. We need to get the software, and which is going to be in the chief's budget this year, to determine what we do need and where our responses are coming from, so we can adequately address the need for delivery of emergency services, whether it is by fire truck or by rescue. And whether that is one central location or two stations, that needs to be determined by a study. And, but I do not believe that taking any of our existing structures where they're located, or even the existing structure that is located on a piece of land that may be ideal for response time, none of those structures are adequate to meet firefighting needs and equipment needs in the 21st century. And that's my concern.
But...
And financial.
But the language, I think, addresses your concern.
Well, yeah, I think so.
It softens it.
It may soften it, but I don't know if we want to soften it as much as being very emphatic on the needs to addressing rescue and firefighting needs of the 21st century.
I think, honestly, Glenn, if you look at it, it just says an ideal location will allow for the consolidation of two, perhaps three, fire stations.
And then it starts going through and eliminating...
While ensuring that industry accepted safe response can be met.
And if I'm not reading something in her, in Laura Epstein's, it starts eliminating, I guess those are lines, the copy that is illustrating some of the problems with our current structures. That is lined out.
You're suggesting, and you have no problem with this other than at the start of where it says Station 2, simply in the blue text after that, simply restoring that to the rec?
I mean, you could keep the lined out portion, just say, for example, Station 2, blah, 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 a 50-year old, that cannot, and Station 3 are both intended to be closed for...
I have not much to say for response times.
I guess planning board is up. Okay, the planning board, because...
It's a prior choice.
It is.
Sorry. I agree, and I think that...
I think that's informational, it's not descriptive.
I think Ms. Epstein's statement softened what's there. And the $11, we have had this before us for years, and come forward tonight and have to decide on it, I think softening is better.
But it isn't necessarily commenting as a member of the public, because I think the public hearing is still open. It's not necessarily to stricken out whoever suggested, I think it was Madam President, for example, the Station 2 is 50 years old, et cetera, et cetera, Station 3 is, et cetera, et cetera. You can do both. You can address Mr. Steckman's concern by calling it for example, and you can soften it.
Seems reasonable to me.
That would work also. And we need to just...
Can you catch that? Restore the, that paragraph preceded for example?
So, and I must... So, and I, let's just read it. "An ideal location would allow for the consolidation of two or perhaps all three of the town's existing fire stations while ensuring that industry-accepted safe response times can be met."
For example.
For example, Station 2...
That's right.
Well, maybe I would use a different expression. No. By way of example, Station 2 cannot accommodate...
Station 2 is a 50-year-old building that cannot accommodate.
Right, it cannot accommodate, and so on. And then a new station should be a sufficient size to provide adequate space. Okay, and then the rest of the paragraph.
Right.
So that's the power of the board, okay?
Okay, now, now, Earl O'Leary's comments.
Right, that's on section 10.7.
Page 149.
Did it pop in that one, Jane?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, so insert language under the second paragraph.
She adds more detail and more specificity.
And add language to Policy 2A. And then add language under Commercial Design Guidelines and add language to Policy 3. Right. My only comment is the use of the word eclectic.
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 Just a little bit of this and a little bit of that.
Okay.
You like it?
Do you like it?
Yes.
Not a word I'd choose, but that's okay.
Not a planner word.
But I think those are good additions, so...
So we're going to correct the, I'm trying to figure out, the streetscape project and the other thing, we decide not to, then I'm looking...
I would leave that.
We also want to make sure we get rid of that map or illustration.
Send back on page 117.
Okay, so no changes?
Don't change the text, just eliminate...
Test the map.
Leave the illustration. Okay, anything on the town parcel inventory? That actually wouldn't be difficult to say that inventory exists, but it's not being evaluated. That, by the way, is language from the current plan, so it's been carried over for many, many years. Hey, does everyone have other comments in the room? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I have one question. Was that last comment part of it?
Yeah, did you want to make, that's in chapter 5.
That was on the inventory list, which does exist. I worked on it. But I was on the Open Space Commission, we own the parts of it, and then you know...
Mr. Steckman's true, he's correct.
Well, you know, it was an interpretation that Don had, someone else had, so it was interpreted differently by different people. This is just something to make it clear and simple.
Okay, I could say, while there is a comprehensive listing of town-owned parcels, there is no detailed inventory in terms of long-term use of these town parcels.
While there is a inventory list of all town properties, there needs to be an evaluation conducted to...
For the long-term tools.
For the long-term goals, or however you want, something like that.
Which you can say, right. Did you get that?
Right.
Okay.
I would ask you to repeat it.
There's a list for an evaluation.
No, she was right.
Okay, and that's on page 63, but the policy would remain as worded.
Yes.
Thank you, Rosemary.
You're welcome. Okay. Everyone feel more comfortable with those?
May I, Madam Chair, just suggest to, first a motion to accept those amendments and then a motion to pass on the plan as amended?
Should we close the public hearing?
That they have to do. They're going to do the...
Yeah, we do that. I think we should close it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree. So have the Planning Board close the public hearing first.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public meeting. All those in favor?
Public hearing.
A hearing, right. unanimous, unanimously approved. Okay.
And then a motion...
Motion to accept the...
To amend, to amend the draft as set forth by Jane.
That's so stated.
Okay. Make a motion to amend the July 2006 draft of the Comprehensive Plan as outlined by Jane Wadman, which includes changes on pages, page 112, re-budget development, changes on page 150 regarding Policy 4, economic development, changes on page 114 regarding services and facilities, changes to Section 9 regarding recreational fields, changes on page 150, the inputs for the Fire Department, changes on page 149, which are the inputs regarding Section 10.7, economic development policies, removal of the map on page 117, and editing of the text regarding town-owned parcels on page 17, uh, page 63, excuse me.
And the previous amendments, move it on, yes.
Should be the draft as amended.
Right.
Oh, yes, draft as amended, thank you.
We further update it.
August 22nd, you, to amend the August 22nd, further.
Okay, we'll add amend the August 22nd. Do you have this as a...
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Opposa. All those in favor, please raise their right hand. Unanimously approved.
Okay, so I have a question for you, Jane. As soon as we can, we will have available, will it be a complete set?
I'll have to tell you, Kate, but our plan is to...
Complete dated September.
On Monday, you'll need a compiled document to then forward to the state and available for the citizens. So we'll shoot for, I'm sorry, we need to prepare the final adopted document, which will include all of the... Well, are we supposed to have it up for Monday next hearing? No, no, just the...
Yeah, that was my question.
I think what we were looking for was the, the, a comprehensive list, ideally this for Monday. All right, but that won't happen, so instead...
Could it be just a third update?
There'll be a third updated list of the amendments.
Including the...
These changes tonight.
Tonight, but also including the changes that we received.
If you want, you want everything put together.
I think it'd be neat to have at least all the changes from this in one document.
Okay.
Okay?
And then after you vote to adopt this, then we put together...
Yes.
An adopted plan that takes out all the italics and all that.
Right.
And includes all the photographs. And that, I don't know how long, a couple weeks, we...
That will be in your hands, but on Monday night, we'll just have a set of papers that will include all the updates.
Jane, can the updated version be posted on the web once it's available electronically?
Yes, in fact, I was going to suggest instead of spending a lot of money on printing costs, you might want to be making, get them copied commercially onto, depending on their size, CDs or DVDs, so that it'd be a lot cheaper for everybody, both for the town and if townspeople want to buy it, everybody can have a copy that way a lot easier.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion that...
No, not yet. They haven't actually passed the whole thing.
Oh, God. Okay, keep going.
Just the amendments.
Entertain a motion to forward this document to the Town Council for recommended approval.
Excuse me, I think, I just don't, you, yeah, you want to have a motion to amend, to adopt all of the amendments as set forth to the Comprehensive Plan and forward the amended document to the Town Council, but you're actually approving it yourself with all of the amendments.
Motion to approve the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to forward to the Town Council.
For adoption.
For adoption.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Opposa and seconded by Mr. Gerv. All those in favor? Unanimous.
I will entertain a motion that...
Close the public hearing?
Yeah, I will entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And a motion to carry the matter for vote over to the Monday night regular meeting of the Town Council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just for the record, that's next Monday, September 25th, at 7:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn?
Please, I haven't closed up.
Second.
You did.
I did.
You did. Okay, a motion to adjourn the council meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, motion. Motion to adjourn the Planning Board meeting?
Second.
All those in...